Try to rush through everything tonight. We're not going to keep you too long. We're going to be very excited. And even though it's loud in here, I'm going to shout louder so that we're ready to go.
Okay.
Thanks.
Speech over.
You're on, game on. Thank you very much. All right, our first order of business is to meet with the library trustees. Jamie, the library director, to discuss what is going on with the library budget for 2020, fiscal year 2020. All right. So, for finance committee, did you guys open your meeting?
We just did.
Excellent. And it looks like we're going to page 72 in our budget books to start. Jamie has a couple handouts for us that she's going to explain, I think, while we all head to page 72. You're welcome.
Thank you. Evening. All right. So, yes, as you go to page 72, my handouts, really, it's more for you to peruse and take home and read, but I'll review it quickly. The budget that we have presented for you tonight will allow us to meet the municipal appropriation requirement. That's one of the requirements from the state for public libraries. The pink sheet really just explains the state aid program and the benefits. The golden rod sheet gives you all the calculations that I have to use to figure that out. As far as the benefits of the program, we get local aid, so there's cherry sheet money associated with it when we meet the municipal appropriation requirement. It does allow us to borrow from other libraries, so we have reciprocal borrowing services, which is really important for the town of Lakeville, because otherwise you become a standalone library. You want to be able to share materials with the towns around you. And we also then get access to grant opportunities. I just, on my last sheet, I wanted to show you that we've been a good steward with the funds that you've been appropriating us. The top part is, this is like a return on investment sheet that I've given you, and it just shows on the things that I can count and give a dollar value for, that we have a return on investment in terms of services that we offer to the community. It's a little difficult to place a dollar value on some of the other things, like the programming and the use of the community rooms and other services that we offer. Those are more about how they impact the quality of life for the people in Lakeville, so I don't really have a dollar value for that. But just to let you know, we hosted over 400 programs last year. We've seen an increase in use of the library, youth services programs, it's been up 39% and adult programs up 29% since I started in 2015. So that's just a quick rundown. If you go to the actual budget request, that's there. We don't have really any new items in our budget request, so now I'm probably on the same, the page that you're on. Really, the majority of our budget increase is representative of the contractual obligations that we have. That's really the changeover last year. There are some slight changes in the expense lines. For example, the trash we share with the Council on Aging, we had to get a slightly larger container this year because it was having a problem overflowing, so I had to increase that line. Electricity, we've put money back in that. It was adjusted last year, but our average bill this year has been about $1,400 a month, so we're likely going to be short for this year, so I've just adjusted that back. In this line, you also see lines for the material spending, so we have books, audio, video, and periodical subscriptions. Those I've adjusted, actually, some of them were adjusted down to make up for the other areas. And that of the budget, in order to make the requirement for the state aid for public libraries program, we have to expend 16% of our budget on materials. When you look at our budget request, in order to do that, we're going to have to spend just over $59,000 in materials for the community. This budget, as far as what we get from the town, we get about $41,000, so we still have to make up a difference of 18. So we do that by using the state aid funds, using other gifts and grants that we get. I don't know if there are any other...
So those costs are not reflected in the budget, right? The ones that you use, the grants and gifts?
Right. It's just more to make a point, like, the 16% is a requirement that we have, and we have to meet that in order to get the state aid money. And then what we end up doing is we use that state aid money to make up the difference that we don't have in the town budget, which is fine.
Yeah, this is the circular reference budget every single year, where we end up in a situation where we have to spend more. So as the budget goes up and you have more on the contractual obligations and the salaries, that you actually have to spend more in the materials, so... But that allows us, and I think the cherry sheet was around 19 grand or something, for the aid that's in there right now in the house budget.
Okay.
Something like that comes through.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think this year we got about 16, but it may be going up for...
For last year, okay.
Yeah.
For next year.
For last year.
And I know one of the big things that we had a question on really was the maintenance of the grounds or the maintenance of the building and the custodial. Are we, do we know what's happening with that? Do we have a separate custodial budget or a separate lawn and maintenance, or is it kind of being done by the highway department? Because I know we had that question, like...
It's being done by the highway department.
The highway department right now? Okay, so it's in their budget?
So we have a line for custodian, but that's really for the interior of the building, the daily cleaning. As far as the outside, it's the highway department comes and handles the grass, and they've also, I have to talk to him some about doing this. This year, we had a part-time, like, eight hours or 10 hours a week. One of his summertime workers came and handled some of that. There is some money built in to, into the B&amp;G ground for B&amp;G line for some upkeep outside, but not a significant amount.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you for adjusting, so you were able to, for the most part, keep it level.
Right. Like I said, I try to stay within that 3%.
Well, it's great. Very well done.
I think we're going to delegate that, you doing it for all the budgets. You're the only one that came in at a reasonable number.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
Don't come with anything extra, so...
I just have all that extra work. Yeah, like I said, I recognize that, you know, there's only so much to go around. Like I said, as long as we meet that threshold, you know, I'm willing to kind of, we go to that point and you come and meet us there, and then we make up the difference for materials. Because those materials that we buy out of other gifts and grants, you know, they directly are used by the community. And so the folks that give us gifts really have the expectation that we're using that money for the intended purpose, which is really enhancements, not for, you know, electricity and cleaning and things. So we try to stay true to that, and we use it for materials and program.
Right. They do have a, which is good, that they have state grants which, at one time, had unencumbered balances of about $40,000. I think that's not what it is necessarily at this point in time, which is not part of the package. And other grants, library gift funds, capital, that was about $40,000.
The capital's 24.
How much?
24.
24, yeah.
We did receive a gift this year, which specifically went for a renovation of the children's program room, and at this point, it's been, the money's been expended for that project, so the balance on the capital is about 24.
Yep. And then they had a expenditure and grant, expendable trust funds. They had at one time about $61,000 in that, and looks like mostly people's names, which I won't read here. So they've been fortunate that they've had, people have significant donations in their name. So that was about 60. The capital ones that she addressed is 24,000, I guess. And then the state grants was unencumbered at about 35 to 40.
Yeah. My last count was 36. We already expended 13,000 this year on materials and programming for that. And the gift fund, you know, does have some money in it, but for example, we purchased a public copier that now has scanning capabilities for the community to use. And then the, some of the other named gift funds, they're going to be earmarked for special projects.
Right. No, that's good. And we do have significant grant funds, which is good.
Yep. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think always happy for the updates. And we'll let you know if we have any questions as we kind of go through, you know, further on.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Kelly, you're up.
[coughs]
We're on marathon budget session tonight, so...
Right.
So Kelly, tell us what you're trying to do with your budget this year.
Okay. So what I'm passing out right now is just the chart. Some of you have seen it before. It's just showing the population growth over the next 20 years, the trend of the seniors, 60, 60-plus is higher than any other age group. And that's kind of countrywide, actually, with the baby boomers just continuing to become seniors. Everyone's kind of trying to deal with the same thing and, you know, plug-in programs and more money to the centers to accommodate the influx of seniors. The other piece that I'm sending out is just some notes that I wanted to share with you to kind of show you what we do and where the monies come from, the monies that we get in from grants and that type of thing. I can either go over it or you guys read it. We currently have over 3,000 residents that are over 60 in Lakeville. We're serving, servicing about 1,700 of them. We get formula grant funding each year from the state, and this year, we got $23,987, which was up almost $5,000 from last year. They were able to secure a couple more dollars per senior to, you know, because two years, the last two years, they hadn't increased that, so that was really good news for everyone. The SIG grant that we get from the state is a three-year grant in funds, Lakeville and Berkeley's outreach worker that we share. And I just got word that we have an increase of that as well, which is wonderful. A significant increase, it's up over $12,000 over the next three years. So that's $36,000 that will be coming in, which makes it nice, because otherwise I would be asking for an outreach worker. She's very busy, she's handling a lot of clients, she's working with our police liaison, and it's just been really beneficial. We have about 86 volunteers who logged over 4,000 hours in 2018. We get donations from the Friends of the COA. They've been working really hard, and this past year, the Friends, a donation from the Police 5K, and Muckey's helped us buy a shed with no cost to the town at all, which was wonderful. Our gifts account continues to grow. We have our trip program, we put that money in there, so we have it for programming, we have it for seniors that can't go on the trips. We use the money from that to do subsidized parties and different programming for those seniors. And then there's just a list of, like, some of the services that we do offer at the bottom of that page. And on the other side, it's just kind of going over what, pulling out what you have in your budget sheets in front of you, what we're asking for, for an increase this year. Most of the increase that we're asking for this year is for personnel. For the last two years, we've needed a part-time person, and like, when push came to shove, that was something that was taken off the table. So this year, we're hoping to get a full-time person in place of the part-time position that we currently have, because it's just so busy here. And so that breaks out there, the cost for those things. And our regular, you know, building budget is really only asking for an increase of about $1,700, and that really comes from just the usage at night with the building, the electricity and the bathrooms and the different things that go along with that. So that's kind of where we're at with budget. Anyone have any questions on the numbers, or any of that?
So right now, we have a 20-hour associate, is that right?
She's 18, yep.
18 hours, and then you're going to look for a 40-hour. And so, just give me a little understanding, because I'm not familiar with it.
Okay. So also, and actually, part of this here, which you'll see in here, our current full-time clerk, we want to bring up to administrative assistant. And then the part-time position, we want to bring into a full-time clerk, that would, so that position would stay, and we just eliminate the part-time. So it's just, it's very busy. We have no receptionists, except for, you know, when the part-time person is here, they're handling the window, but when they're not, we're just kind of running around doing, wearing all the hats.
Now, can you use any of the grant funding to cover any of these costs, or no?
Some COAs are able to use some of the grant money from the state for positions, or to subsidize a position, but the grant money fluctuates from year to year. As I stated, they had gone down for two years, and now it just went back up. So I tend to err on the side of caution with that piece. I would rather subsidize maybe if we needed more hours in outreach and, you know, just have a smaller portion of grant money going towards a position, so that we wouldn't later down the road have to, you know, eliminate or cut it back, because it's so needed.
Yeah, I mean, a couple years ago, was it two years ago, that there was the proposal to shut down completely on Fridays, was it? Or, you know...
Or half a day, like the town hall does, yeah.
Half a day on Fridays and things like that, because we really didn't have the money in the budget to fund the personnel, and they really didn't have the time to do the administrative work that they needed to do. And so it really became an issue where we realized that we didn't have enough personnel to kind of handle the volume that was going through. And every single year, Kelly brings to us the increase in the number of people served within the community and the outreach that you're doing. And I mean, I know that I come here for a number of different things, and I certainly support, you know, what's going on here at the Council on Aging, and, you know, I'm certainly in support of giving you guys what you're looking for. I know we had that part-time position, we kind of, you know, we have it, we get rid of it, we couldn't fill it, it just didn't work. And so if it's really an issue in trying to find that person, because we can't find that part-time person, you've proposed a solution, which I'm happy to support.
Thank you. Yeah, the full-time position would really just streamline things. Having someone here part-time, they come in, and then, you know, they're out, when they come back in, we're filling them in, they're, you know, kind of just starting from behind, you know, behind for the week. And it would just be a lot smoother, and I think that the work would just get done a lot faster and easier that way. So it would be really helpful.
Just another, like, byway background, too. Kelly was originally the admin. Well, first you were the clerk, right? And then you became the admin. So I was just asking Rita, making sure that we still have the job descriptions for, you know, their active job descriptions for the clerk position, the full-time clerk and the full-time admin. So it's going back to where we were, essentially.
Right.
With regard to personnel, when we had the changeover in the director of the COA. So it's, it's not really, we kind of ended up stepping back, and now we're moving it back forward.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it would be effective of like, two years ago. So, you know, bringing Lori up to administrative assistant, and, you know, so those other, which stay, you know, like, kind of quiet line items, but at some point, when we grow again, they would still be there, we'd still have those job descriptions if we needed to look at those again. And then I think as part of the, if you guys have a copy of it, I did just a scenario of, like, 12 different COAs in the area, and what the directors are paid for hours that they work. And we came in at the lowest. So I was just hoping to get an increase in my position this year as well, if you guys could take a look at that. So that's why, you know, between Lori moving up, the full-time position, and myself, that's really where the increase in my budget that I'm asking for this year is.
I'm a sort of, we certainly come here every week, probably every Friday, and then usually at least one other day for an hour or two. And the place has certainly changed over the last few years and become a, I'll call it, a more vibrant part of the community, where we have a lot more seniors coming to the place than we used to, which is kind of a tribute to the people that work here, adding programs and the people that are here working. So I was somewhat disappointed last year when we did cut the requested part-time person, and now we limped through that year, and now it's become a full-time position. And you know me, I hate adding people to anyone's budget, so I think it is time to add it here. So I'd like to see that go through.
Sounds like you're here enough that maybe you could be that person.
I could be, I could be. Well, they actually had to hire the hot person just to take care of me. Maybe I shouldn't come.
We'll put him to work if we need to on a Friday, don't worry.
Maybe I shouldn't come. And so we do that. It's a very busy place, and I'd encourage anyone, if you ever have a Friday morning off, it's a pretty busy place, in particular on Fridays, where they have their cafe. But that isn't the only reason, it's a lot of programs that go on.
Don't you have, is it this Friday or next Friday? You've got the police up here? Is it this Friday?
Yeah, with the first responders, and the Columbus County District Attorney will be here as well.
Next Friday?
Yep.
Okay, 29.
And if anybody ever has any volunteer time that they want to come in, we'll never turn that away, either.
Right, John, that's usually your plug.
Anyone have any questions?
I just have a clarifying question, and I think you said it, and I'm sorry I didn't keep up, but, so the, you have a current part-time person?
Yep.
They're moving to full-time?
That's what we would like to do.
And then you're hiring a part-time person?
No, so we won't have a part-time person. So that's why...
Okay, I see, it's a zero.
You know, we'll keep those descriptions, because that would probably be next in the future, if we continue to grow at this rate.
Okay, got it. Thank you for that.
The next one, you'll have a tough solo.
That's enough.
Well, we don't have a lot of room left to put them in. That office space will be full at that point, so...
All right. Anyone else have any questions? Look at that, we're back on time.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. Leah, are you up? Oh, John's here. I didn't see John before. Board of Assessors, page 18. Did you bring your...
I'm sure I'll keep you guys right on schedule. I'm assuming everyone has a copy of our budget. So, basically, other than some slight increases in payroll, the only change from FY '19 to '20 for the Assessors Department is we need to convert, or we're going to be converting to the new GIS system, which has a $6,600 cost to that. Lion's share of that, or a good portion of it, is the actual conversion itself, which we're behind at this point on. We could have done this in the past, but we haven't, and it's, we need to, we're at the point where we need to do it. The only other line item that we're potentially looking for is some additional training for the board and the staff. That's both the GIS and just overall, we've been kind of lax in keeping up to date. I shouldn't say we've been lax, but we're at a point where we probably need to make sure we do a little more to keep the staff and ourselves up to date with all the requirements of the assessing world. Questions?
Once again, pleased with its presentation, and I think it's certainly reasonable.
Well, since I didn't put the presentation together, I'm just presenting it, I'll take credit for it.
Well, you get credit for it, though, John.
Great job.
We'd be beating the hell out of you.
I keep you on schedule?
Oh, you have to wait now.
We highlighted a flaw in our schedule.
Exactly. We, no, I think if we're good, we're good. Let's go review the veteran services budget, since it's on here.
Amen.
7 to 71A, that doesn't have a time associated with it.
Well, because Will works till 8 o'clock in Halifax tonight, so I told him I would present it for him.
All right, so present it, Rita.
So page...
Page 70 to 71.
Okay. Well, his wages, he's part-time, does a really good job. He works 15 hours per week in the town, here at the senior center, so that reflects his increase for non-union employees. And he did increase veterans' medical benefits by 5,000, and they also receive fuel assistance, he increased that by $500. Now, the next page after that, page 71A, we are reimbursed, I know John always wants to see this, we get reimbursed 75% of the veterans on the, it's always one year behind, so they're proposing to reimburse us $108,846 in FY '20.
That just falls into free cash?
If it's not spent, no.
The reimbursement?
It doesn't, it comes in as a revenue. It's on our cherry sheet.
Right, right. Yes.
But if he doesn't spend, like, in FY '18, it was only $105,800.
Yep.
The difference went into free cash.
Yep.
But it's hard to say, because we are having more walk-through-the-door, and it's, you know, they're able to be funded immediately through us. It takes a while for them to get on the federal, to get the federal check from the VA, so we supplement that until they are on the federal program. But just to tell you, to say 10 years ago, we didn't spend but $10,000 in these two line items, so...
We spend it, but we do get reimbursed for three quarters to follow me.
Yep.
And certainly, we've made it our top priority, and I think we've probably ferreted out all of the veterans and the widows that we think we can. A lot of the newer veterans, the Iraqi war veterans, Afghanistan, a lot of them are doing it online directly with the government. So it may not be an increased burden as the years go on. So it's not a burden, increased cost as we go forward. And it's almost not set by him. The only thing set by him is the salary. The rest is all reimbursements for the most part. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? No? All right, great. We still have, sorry, three more minutes before 7:05. So I do want to talk just briefly as a board on the host community agreement with Northeast Alternatives. We have that included in our sign folder, but I wonder, I was kind of thinking that maybe we should just wait till Wednesday and just table it till Wednesday? They want it signed now? I mean, I know there's no change...
Well, there were no changes at all, so...
Yes, so there's no change to that particular host community agreement, but I'd like to just, if we can just move it to Wednesday's meeting?
That's about to you.
Yeah, so let's just do that. If you guys have any problems doing that...
Why?
Because Wednesday, we're talking about marijuana the whole time. I don't want to get into like, a long discussion that's drawn out where, if we're looking at, I know it's a template of what we have, but I just want to just talk about it when we're all in the mindset of talking about marijuana.
I don't mind waiting. I was just curious to know if, if...
I do, I don't see the point of waiting. It's a template of exactly, if, with no changes, I don't see why we just don't sign it and move forward.
Unless you're going to...
Unless we're going to not sign it?
No, I mean, I don't intend to not sign it. I think I just want to make sure that, you know, if we have, I guess we have two, three, that we've signed and negotiated that are done, and then on Wednesday, we're talking about some of the other ones that wanted changes going forward, so...
That's a different, those we can't sign. This is no change.
Right.
I'm for moving forward with it and signing.
Okay. I just, you know, one of the thoughts that I had was if we talked to council about what they're seeing out there, again, not necessarily to change the terms of the one that we have in front of us. I'm okay with signing it tonight, too, but I also don't mind just waiting till Wednesday, so, just if you think that there's a better option.
Unless you're going to change it between now and Wednesday, and I think we certainly inferred we have a template that we just...
Yeah.
If they all agree to the template, I certainly would be willing to sign it. If they all agree to the template, I certainly would be willing to sign it.
Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion to sign the Host Community Agreement with Northeast Alternatives.
I'll, if that's your motion, I'll second it. I'll show move, show move, I guess.
I'll sign it.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're done with that then. All right, it is now 7:04, so close.
When, when, when would we come back? We've done most of the budgets, so we'll have done all of the budgets through tonight.
Yeah.
When do we, when do we meet as a group, positioning? Do you, do we do that, or do you go back to the schools first?
Well...
Then where do the schools stand, and where do we stand reconvening with the Finance Committee and saying what we should do?
Yeah, so I think after the election is when we should be meeting to discuss, because that way we have Leah on board, provided no one runs a writing campaign against her, so that we'll have, you know, the Board of Selectmen will have, you know, potentially a new, you know, composition or the same people in general, you know, on the Finance Committee, but then at least we kind of have that set in stone. But the schools, I don't think they set a regional FinCom meeting. They're meeting, I believe, on Wednesday this week, so that's their next meeting to discuss the budget, and then we'll kind of go from there. I haven't seen a meeting pop up with them. But we'll have to have a meeting so that we can go through what we have for the budget summary after we've heard everything, because that'll be the point where we decide where we are and what we need to start looking at in terms of...
Right, but do we know the schools' number before we begin to cut on them?
Yeah, I wouldn't do anything with it now, because the House has, so the House is in the process of debating their portion of the state bill, and that's the biggest component that could easily throw more money back to offset the assessment to the schools.
Right.
So we kind of have a couple things going on that I don't want to be premature about making cuts.
No, I don't, I don't need them.
In other departments, when our biggest department being the schools
Right.
is subject right now to a couple more iterations between the House and the Senate. We definitely won't have it done, you know, but typically we at least have House numbers and maybe Senate numbers by the time we're kind of looking at what the real impact is going to be in the budget.
So would we be reconvening in the month, the middle of April or sometime after that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll probably meet, you know, maybe the second week of April, and then maybe, you know, and then we'll have another meeting, just to kind of go through and look at what we have in totality.
Okay.
So that being said...
Senators.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Good evening, folks, and we lead St. Patricus today. And you know, St. Patricus got rid of all the snakes in Ireland. Did we get all our snakes away from here in Lakeville? I don't think so. But that being said, I'd like to give you an introduction, Joan Morton, as you know, myself, as you know, and Fred Beal was just taken to the hospital today, so unfortunately he can't be with us. But he's here in spirit, and I told my recorder this, so if he gives me any problems, we'll have it later. As you know, as every year we try to do, this is a courtesy to you, there's no requirement at all, but the purpose of this briefing is to provide you with an in-depth, I guess we say, in-depth report of what we're doing for the last year and what we're going to do for the next year. And Joan's going to be my... I'm afraid of this easel, yes, whoa. But 2018 has been very beneficial to us. First of all, we increased the fees, and you all did that, and I really appreciate it because it was necessary, we haven't done that in ten years. We increased the fees, and there was no complaints by anyone within the town, and that's a first, because generally we have complaints we didn't have. So the updated rules and regulations we did, and then in addition to that, I gotta put my glasses on. Strobridge Cemetery, do you have that? Everyone familiar with Strobridge?
Tell us where it is.
Kingman Street?
Okay, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
This is a dormant cemetery. It was dormant because no one wanted to touch this. Sandy Horton, years ago, said this will be our moneymaker. In addition to this cemetery, we have another one next to it, and that will be on this side of it, that was going to the town of Lakeville, but we can't use it because there's a ledge, and that ledge is two foot deep, so there's no way we can utilize this. So we looked at this and we said, okay, we're going to do it at Strobridge Cemetery. It's a beautiful cemetery. So what we looked at was, let's get a survey done. And we did the survey, and we did an infrared ground penetration that goes down to 60 feet. Most, all graves are 10-foot, and years ago, when he dug it, it was five and a half foot. So we did that ground penetration. So what we ended up with, we have $500,000 to the town of Lakeville on expected revenue. And now this is certified by John Pink, you all know John, I'm sure. So now we have that. And then if we look at it, I'm going to go into this a little bit further, but, so it's $500,000 here that we have, that we can utilize. So then in addition to that, we had a problem at Prieston Cemetery, everybody was saying, how are we going to water our plants? So we had an individual that came to us and said, I'll donate a water tank. So we had a water tank donated, but that didn't give us water. So I talked to Rita about this, and we're going to tie into a main. That main would have cost you $200,000. Cost us nothing, because I put the water tank in, and we agreed to it in the commission, and the barren golf course is providing the water, free of charge, as a donation. So now we have a water tank to water plants. I love these little things. So we installed no littering signs at Prieston and Thompson Hill Cemetery, because everybody was throwing all the trash up on the top of the hill, the neighbors were complaining, all this trash is coming in, the old flowers and so on and so forth. So, okay, we put signs up, that helped to some degree, but we still have to go there every week and clean it out. With the efforts of Susan Lynch, we now have everything on a computer in a town, as far as our commission is concerned. It used to be paperwork. And as you know, we go into the town, we go downstairs in the old files with little index boxes and try to find something, it's an impossibility. So now the town clerk has the ability to go in and see our files that we have, and it's great, because someone calls and says, where is someone buried? Immediately we can tell them.
Did Sue finish the project?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
It's all done.
I wasn't sure that she had, okay.
Ever been on the Middle Fence, Sampson Cemetery, I think?
What?
Sampson Cemetery?
Yep.
What did you ask, do we have?
We used to at one time take care of Sampson Cemetery.
No.
And they went into a corporation, so now we no longer do that. So they called us for advice, we provided that, and so I think they're on track of what they're supposed to be doing, as far as law and regulations. That was an important issue for us. And then we met with the pastor of the Cornerstone Church, used to be Mullen Hill Church, and we discussed what we do and how we do it, and he asked us if we would be interested in taking over the cemetery. We discussed it at length, and as soon as we stated that it would probably be a $270,000 profit for the church, they kind of decided they'd keep it. So that was fine, because we have 33 cemeteries, so one more...
They just didn't understand the business of cemeteries.
Yes, yes. So we had a problem, and I'm sure that all of you are aware of this, the, and I just saw something, I think, last week, where Middleboro is talking about the railroad coming in and all those issues that you all have been involved with, it affects this particular So they are going to purchase, apparently, five homes that are close to this cemetery, is ours, but to get to it, we have to go through a right-of-way property. How do we solve this issue? We have to bring maintenance equipment in there, so we contracted with a neighbor that owns property adjacent to the cemetery, and they agreed to do it for us, annual basis, $250 a year. That was a great deal, and we've been doing that now for a year and a half. I know it's going to happen, I knew it. I knew that one, because the floor's so slippery, and I fixed one of these things before.
Guys should put in for a new one of those when you buy it.
Yes, yeah, yeah. But that makes a little levity here, doesn't it? A little levity in the meeting. You all are not aware, and I'm sure, because I've been doing this for 15 years now, and we have vinyl fencing all around Prieston Cemetery and Thompson Hill. That's not how it was. It was granite posts and rails, and they were made by hand in 1846 and 1857. And those granite posts and rails were given away, said. We're trying to recover them. We have been successful now to obtain 14 of them. They have been reinstalled back at Prieston Cemetery, now we are starting to have the barrier that was originally there between Thompson Hill and Prieston. And the Lions Club, we made an agreement with them that we would give them the vinyl fencing to finish their project in place of the granite posts and rails, and that worked out well. So now we're still seeking additional granite posts and rails, which will be our next endeavor. I don't believe that anyone knows what a ward cemetery is. You do.
Please, here, please, the cemetery, up on the hill, on the crooked lane.
It's in the middle of nowhere. However, it's a cemetery that we are responsible for, and we must respect the citizens that are buried there. And it's gone really, it was deteriorated, so we have replaced the front of it, and we replaced the gate to it. Looks beautiful. Stomp damage. John, I think you asked me about that one?
Before.
At the last meeting, you said what kind of stomp damage we had. Rita was involved with it too, and so we have now $5,000 that was stomp damage. There's really $8,000, some odd dollars, but Southeast Fence gave us some money, they said they'll take care of some of it, so we had some donation to it that didn't cost us but the $5,000.
And we included that in the FEMA reimbursement?
Right, so...
We're getting close to getting reimbursed, but we haven't received the money yet.
Right, that will be coming back to us. So the stomp damage really was negligible. Okay, what's up for 2019? We did a lot in 2018, we're not done. I may be close to being done, and this will be my right-hand person that's going to take over here. So what do we do for 2019 that's more important to the town and to the cemeteries? This is an issue, very, very important. Anyone aware of that?
Can you read it for us?
I can't read it.
Well, in a nutshell, it's, we took, what, 30 of the cemetery, or how many cemeteries by eminent domain?
Twenty-nine.
Town meeting approved it.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine of the cemeteries were taken at by eminent domain, nothing has been recorded. So I've talked to Ken about...
The cemetery one.
Having, would need legal fees for this county council to do the title search and follow through with recording.
Can everyone see this? These are cemeteries in town Lakeville. Twenty-nine were authorized for us to be taken in a town meeting additionally, Mullen Hill, and that was a private cemetery. They're all private, we haven't done it. We're not going to take Mullen Hill, because the controversy that would ensue from that one would be unbelievable. So what we're doing is, we're looking at this and we're saying, okay, what are these cemeteries since 1969 were given to us by deed? And I have all the deeds. So we're going to look at that and see what deeds were authorized to give it to the town of Lakeville, and I believe right now we have 14 cemeteries that were not given to us, and those are the ones that I'd like to go and obtain. We're maintaining them, we're spending the money for them, so why don't we just legally take them? I think it's very, very important. So that's one of our issues we're going to be addressing this year. Next.
We are not taking them, you're just moving, they were voted on as a taking, but logistically they just weren't...
Officially taken.
From an administrative perspective, it just never happened.
Never happened.
Right, that's interesting.
Seven requests to the Board of Selectmen were given, I have all those if you like them, seven requests, that's said by different commissioners of the Cemetery Commission, please help us take this, and it was not ever done. But we'll discuss this when we go later.
Prior to this board existing.
Oh, prior, absolutely, absolutely.
Make sure that's clear.
Okay, we have to finish getting our cemeteries back into the vintage age, back to the 1800s, the early 1900s, and to do that, we have to locate posts and rails. We can't vinyl fencing, vinyl fencing is, that's not how cemeteries are made today. Maybe some people like that idea, we don't as a Cemetery Commission. We want to go back to the original way it used to be, granite posts and rails. And we're talking about posts, granite posts that are 1856, 1890, that were hand-cut, and we're going to find them. So once we do, that's our project, we're going to look in for them. I don't know what your thoughts are about this, but there's no place in the town of Lakeville with strictly cremation burials. And today's, 76% of all burials in the state of Massachusetts are cremations. Why? The average burial today is $10,000. That includes the hirs, that concludes the ceremony, that transportation, so on and so forth. Cremation is $1,500. Cemetery plot for cremation is $300, the regular plot is $1,200. So again, to the point now, people looking more and more for cremations. So we're looking at a cremation burial, can I have that chart on Prieston? This is what we're looking at. The barren golf course is here, we're looking at this area here. 120 cremations. $300 per cremation burial, $300 intermittent, $600 times 120. $300 per cremation burial, $300 intermittent, $600 times 120. Thank you.
Have we had requests for that?
Yes.
Okay.
It was either that, on the cremation side, or to use colon bariums. Are you familiar with colon bariums at all? Colon bariums are a lodge, would you say, probably a small building that has little niches in it?
Oh, yeah.
That you can put people in, you open the drawer, you put them in, you seal the drawer, put a lock on it. We really didn't like that idea, because the average colon barium is $50,000, and that's all 100 burials. And then we're looking at, oh, the golf course? So we thought maybe the ground space would be better. We'll be filing grants. I heard grants on everyone that's been talking before me, and our commission's looking at grants. So we'll see what we can do about that to help us in this endeavor. Rather than take it from your funds. It's there, so let's utilize it. And we're looking at that now. I don't know if anyone's familiar with Clock Cemetery at all? Clock Cemetery is 105. It's going on way to Rochester. We're looking at that, and we have to have a survey done. Want to do the same thing as what we did with Strobridge, to verify that we have over 250 spaces there. I'm sure we have over 250, probably more. So we're gonna conduct a survey on that one. In order to obtain revenue again, we're going back into local newspapers and identifying that Strobridge is available, and start selling what we have. Cemetery fencing at Ward Cemetery, we just completed, but we have to do the remaining portion of it. There's three more sites to do. So we're gonna be looking at that one. I think you all like this one.
You're assuming we can read it.
Can you read it, John?
I can't read it.
Okay. In conclusion, John, in conclusion, I did agree, because of all the rest of the stuff. But we are happy to report that the town of Lakeville now has over 1,000 grave spaces available for sale. The anticipated revenue today's price is expected to be over $1,500,000. If Sandy Horton was alive and saw that, she would say, oh, my God. She picked the right people.
Seeing there's no more burial space.
Also, too, just as a side note, we conduct an average of 10 burials a year. We believe that we have sufficient burial space for the next 100 years. 100.
How many do you bury a year?
Ten.
Okay. We have about 100 people that die in town. So you got 10%.
Yeah, well, we...
Yeah, okay.
I mean, this year, we had eight.
Yeah.
So it varies, but no more than 10. So we have enough now, John, and everybody, myself included. We have enough burial space for the next 100 years. And that's great for a town. I don't think too many towns can say that. So in conclusion, this is our briefing. Are there any questions?
To veterans, did you bury any or many this year in the new veteran cemetery that you...
No, we sold three more lots.
Okay, okay.
No more burials.
Okay.
Could I have that Strobridge, please? Now that you're bringing that up. We divided Strobridge. I don't want to take more of a time from someone else.
No, no, we're running out. I can't ask questions. Go ahead.
Strobridge, we divided into Section A, Section B, Section C, Section D, and Section E. And the reason we did that is, we haven't touched this area at all. We haven't touched this area at all, because there's stones there. And normally, when there's stones, they're burials. Because in the old days, that's all they used to use, were stones. They never used monuments. And then up here, we didn't touch this, because this is a private portion of this cemetery. We didn't touch that, but we just put Mr. and Mrs. Dudeman in there, and they're lifelong members of the community, and we just buried Mrs. Dudeman. And this, we haven't touched either. So here is what we're thinking. Either one of these two, 120 spaces or 50 spaces, for first responders or veteran cemetery. That's for the future. That's what we're looking at. Here, we're looking at 500-plus spaces. We can give away 120 or 50 for our first responders or the veterans. But that's in the future. So that's what we're looking at, as far as that, you're talking about, John. We still have, as far as the veteran cemetery up in Thompson Hill, we still have 110 remaining there. So we're great for a while.
You have 1,000 empty spots, but it sounded like you have a lot more than that.
On what, John?
On empty plots. You only have 1,000, is that right?
No, no, no. Oh, no.
For the town?
On the veteran cemetery specifically?
No, no. Overall, in the town, you said we have 1,000?
Oh, in the town, we have 1,000.
We have 1,000, okay. Because you're throwing out big numbers.
But that's not count, that's not count in the veteran cemetery.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's in addition to...
Listen, 100 years worth of burial sites, and who figured everyone was getting cremated?
Yeah. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Well done, as always. Don't throw that child away.
Well, thank you very much. Do I get a raise?
Yep, yes, yep.
Double. So you pay double the salary?
Exactly. Nice guy.
All right, Brian. You and your historical commission, Nancy, everyone?
No one's getting my money.
I'm Brian Reynolds, Chamber of Historic Commission, and I'm here to go over our budget for the next year.
And we put in for the 2020 budget, $500 for the Historical Commission, and the Historic Townhouse account, $4,500, which are the same as we had requested last year. And there's an issue on an account, who's paying for water and opening and closing and repair of the underground sprinkler system that we share with the Park Department and the electric bill. I'm not certain how it breaks down. Can you explain it?
Yes. You're not, you used to budget 1,000 as part of a $4,000 to $5,000 water bill. It's hooked up to the Ted Williams Camp now, so you no longer have to allocate 1,000 for that. And I noticed you put it to the repair and maintenance budget. And the library takes, notifies when to turn it on and off. You don't have to do that either.
Okay.
They take care of that.
All right, fine. And the townhouse is going to have, the townhouse roof is going to be replaced and the chimney repaired this year. All right? Now, we had, since 2004, we have been requesting various projects concerning historic preservation in the town. What's on your sheet? Item number one? Well, we, item number, we're changing the order a little bit. Item number one is what on your sheet is item number two. The Comprehensive Townwide Inventory of Historic and Archaeological Assets Survey.
That's page 123.
The inventory. These are the forms that have been made out in the past, mostly by our members. And in this day and age, the Massachusetts Historical Commission is basically looking for work done by professional people in the field of preservation. Now, I know that this year, the town of Dartmouth has taken, is taking $1,500, $15,000 from their Community Preservation Act funds, and they're requesting $10,000 from the Massachusetts Historical Commission as a grant, which makes it $25,000 to update the surveys. So we're assuming that our update would be in line with that, because all prices seem to keep going up time after time. And so we're figuring, well, on your sheet is item two would be $25,000. Item number one above it, National Register, National Register Listing and Preservation Plans for Pond and Thompson Hill Cemeteries. We're estimating $10,000 for that. Item three, Townwide Recordance, Reconnaissance Archaeological Survey and Preservation Plan. We're estimating $30,000. 15 years ago, it was $13,000, and all these prices keep going up every year. Do you have any other questions or comments?
How often do any of those surveys need to or should be updated? Once done, is there a timeline by which they should be updated? I mean, clearly, I would imagine the Historic and Archaeological Assets Survey, that's not changing, right? But, you know, are there updates that typically are required to those plans, too, for long-term maintenance?
Well, I'm kind of deaf, so I didn't really understand. Didn't really, sorry, but I mean, I can't help it.
So with, with those, with those capital requests that you have?
Yes.
Are there any ongoing maintenance costs associated with them? Are they, are they something that produces an electronic record? I guess I'm asking. Or is it something that would produce a paper copy that would then need to be somewhat updated over time? Or we have no idea, because we're not sure what's out there and what it would cost?
Well, we're not really sure. It's most likely going to be computerized. I think all the other towns that I've talked to other people in, everything is now online or, you know, available somewhere.
Okay.
And by computer. And ours are handwritten. They're not even typed for the most part.
And, and so I think you'd explained once before, now, without that, we can't apply for certain grants? Is that correct?
Well, that's part of our problem. Massachusetts Historical Commission has a, you know, has a procedure for each thing that they request or want done. And so you have to comply with their rules and regulations. There's certain things you have to have accomplished before you can apply for a grant. The ultimate goal is something called, I believe, you've got me. There's a term for it. Completion of the comprehen, well, I can get it for you. I don't have it written down in front of me. But yes, there is, there's a procedure you have to go to, go through, and the more things you accomplish in the process makes you more eligible for grants.
Okay.
Number one is to have a historical district, correct?
Yes, we need a historic district, yes.
So is that number two? Number two is what we need to do in order to have a historic district?
We have to do number two first, when they will consider it.
First.
And also the pond designation, the national. They won't consider that until you have the survey complete as comprehensive as possible.
Okay.
Any more? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page 24.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'm gonna be short and sweet, so I don't think my budget went up that much, just 5% due to my wages, the assistant town clerk wages, according to the FY '20 budget. Also, I went up on my education and training expense due to my mandatory conferences and mentoring classes due to the federal census and the presidential election that's coming up. Also, on my elections, I did go up 9% due to early voting that the Secretary of State is proposing in February for five days. Last year, in October, I spent $2,500 on those 11 days. I do have to have mandatory poll worker training, so I did go up $500 on that. I do need to replace my ballot pens, just asking for $100. I do need to replace them along the line, because the new voting machines do need special pens for that, which we'll be using them on April 1st. So I hope everybody gets a chance to vote. And then I do need new ballot boxes for early voting to transfer more early voting ballots to the polls. So it's just a small increase that I'm going up. I don't need anything for my registration. And on my memo that I think I submitted, I do have a wish list that is just technology, just some databases that I'm looking to hopefully obtain in the next five years, just to streamline my office. I want to work a little bit smarter, not harder. Does anybody have any questions?
So with regard to the new permitting software that we're working on, so I know we've been talking about that, and like, you've brought for a number of years, the books that you have of like, the dog license fees and all those things that you've been keeping.
Oh, my.
The old school, you know, $25 handwritten, you know, very, very neat.
Yes, ledger.
Ledgers. So I know that that's probably one thing we want to make sure gets coordinated when we're looking at the IT plan and all of that, because you're the keeper of the records.
Yes.
And in terms of the long-term maintenance of what are we doing with storage and all of that, so I think that that's probably a, maybe not a discussion for today, you know, per se. But as we start to look at the long-term IT and space needs with regard to all of our duplication of records, that that would be something that I think maybe we'd be talking about possibly for the fall, you know?
I think we'd need to do that, and hopefully soon.
Yeah, okay. Because I think it's too soon for now, for this town meeting, but if we kind of work on it over the summer, because I know that that kind of coordinates all the different departments, and I know it's, you know, one of Rita's wants to work on that, too, and we'll have kind of duplication of time over kind of the summer to be able to do that. So I think that might be something that would be great for, for the town.
Definitely. Yes, we do need that.
That's my only question. It's not really a question. Does anyone have any questions? Hello?
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
I know. It's tough.
It's tough on that $100 for pens.
Yeah.
All right, Deb, you're up.
Hey.
You are the 21.
Okay, mine should be pretty simple, too. I've gone up on postage, because we're running, postage went up. Went down on printing to make up for the postage. Actually, I really haven't done much there. What I really want to talk about is salaries and the position I need, or we need as a town. We need assistant treasurer-collector. I went to a great succession plan at the MMA. Five years, we're five years, like, probably behind getting a succession plan. But I'd like you really to consider this position, because it's somebody that can sign a check, God forbid if something happens to me, or if I'm out, or if I decide to take a vacation, I don't have to wire money from Hawaii, or, you know, something like that. I've got, you know, I work with, I work with a great staff who go above and beyond anything that's asked of them. I've really done, we had $37 million come into our department this year, right through our department. That was everything through us, every single department. Every single department interacts with us. It's almost like we have a heartbeat, you know? And then we had thirty-five million go out in warrants, which, you know, we're also a big part of. We work with the assessors very well, and we work with the accounting department very well, but we need an assistant, not just for me, just for the town. It needs to have an assistant treasurer-collector. That's my biggest thing that I want on this.
So with the assistant, what, is it based on volume that you're seeing going through your office, that you're in need of that person?
Well, we have, okay, now, we have electric liens, so I'm not only getting yelled at because of taxes, now I'm getting yelled at because people have electric liens on their bills, so we have to put onto the bills and collect.
I'm supposed to get reimbursed from MG&E on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to work out. I have an idea of how to do it. I've talked to Rita about it, and I've talked to Todd.
Yeah.
And the septic loans are going up, because there's far more buildings. The building permits are going up. We have to sign off on every single building permit, MLCs, everybody's buying a house, so we have thousands of MLCs that we do. Granted, we have a lockbox, still has to be proven. We have online payments, they still have to be proven. Like I said, we'll get it done, because that's what we do. And I just like, you know, like I said, I don't need, I think we need an assistant, because it's good for the whole town. I don't know.
If I may too, for the administrative assistant treasurer-collector, that's the only person that can be another signer on bank accounts.
Other than the treasurer?
No, just the treasurer, and, yeah, she's been the only signer on the accounts since Roz.
Roz used to sign, you could sign it. The only thing she couldn't sign, I think, was MLCs.
MLCs, no one can sign except the treasurer.
Only I can sign them, yeah. So, I mean, you think about it. I'm not asking for a decision right now, I'm not trying to push anything, I would just really like to see it for all our sakes, that we have somebody in here, and we develop some kind of succession plan in the treasurer's office.
Okay.
Back a year or so ago, a call, Billy, Billy was in the department.
Yeah.
Did he ever get replaced?
No.
Should he be replaced?
Yes.
So is that in your budget?
Well, I have, I already have Kim here as a clerk. Kim, Jean, and a new treasurer-collector. We don't need to have another Billy, because then we're back to full staff again.
But that must have been then, so back in 2017, right? Because that's where we have the treasurer-collector, then we have the, what, two clerks, three clerks?
Three clerks in 2017, and that, yeah, in the payroll.
So four people?
In the payroll, yeah, that's including the payroll department.
Okay, right, right, because that was moved out.
Yeah. And then we went down the next year, because we just, you know, because we didn't have payroll anymore, because now Clarinda's there, so. But now Kim's also doing payroll in her job as well.
So are you saying the assistant treasurer would be the assistant treasurer plus to what Billy was doing? I don't know what the additional functions are, whether it's just signatory functions.
Well, we all work together as a team, so it's just another person, the assistant treasurer-collector, like now, as busy it is, I'm answering the phones, I'm opening mail, because we just don't have enough people. I don't need another Billy, because I have a Kim and a Jean, but I need an assistant treasurer-collector, who can do the work that Billy was doing, you know, because Jean's the clerk, and we all help out, so, but we need an assistant treasurer-collector. Like I said, not for me, for the town, looking out for our best interest. The auditors would even tell you that.
Yes. Have any questions?
So the existing people that you have, could any of them be promoted into this position, or does that not meet your needs?
I was hoping for, I was hoping for that, but, I mean, but, and part of the succession that I learned when I went to MMA is you tap the people inside the building, because there's all kinds of talent in the building itself, so people that are familiar with the municipalities and the turnovers and things like that. And then you just train the assistant treasurer-collector, because if somebody new comes in after me, you need, you know, I'm sorry, somebody new is going to come in after me, it could be this year for all I know, so I would just like my department to have the same integrity that it's always had. Okay?
Okay. Any questions? Good.
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have ten more minutes, we'll go over budget summary. All right, so everyone should have gotten the updated budget summary, which only gets worse every time we look at it.
Can I park the machine?
Parks at eight.
Oh, great.
I can quickly go all.
Yeah, so, okay, we'll let Rita go over what's here, what's not, what's missing.
I haven't changed anything on the revenue, okay?
Excellent.
And what I did is, I just, can you guys hear Rita?
Yes, I'm.
I just highlighted.
Make sure you're being quiet.
Oh, all right.
So on the first page of the expenses, I put the placeholder in for Nade's budget, for the part-time custodian of fifteen thousand, seven fifty-two. And I did have my IT director update all of my maintenance agreements. He did add a few things on. I didn't have time to do my new page for the IT budget, but there's a fourteen thousand dollar increase there, and then five hundred dollar increase for the sealer of weights and measures. The pension, Plymouth County pension will get reduced. I'm still working on the allocations. We might see the deficit drop by ten or fifteen thousand with that. And I checked with Bristol-Aggie today. For next year, I think I budgeted, I carried forward this year's budget with seventeen students, and we officially have sixteen there, so there might be a fifteen thousand dollar reduction in Bristol-Aggie students. But that's really the only good news I have.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, what that means is that there's a possibility that this deficit might drop by like thirty grand to get us to like six sixty or something as a deficit in this budget as presented with everybody's requests. I know that we will be waiting to see what happens with the reimbursement levels for really probably transportation reimbursement coming from the state with regard to the school budget. We'll be talking to the schools about the need to reduce the budget request, certainly, and that'll kind of be the first big cut area that we'll be going to, to see where that kind of transpires. Other than that, we don't have an increase listed yet in estimated receipts. And we talked about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we'll have as additional revenue.
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty. So, you know, if that goes in, we'll be kind of reducing the deficit to five hundred and twenty to start with, roughly. On top of that, you know, the forty S money, which has been cut this year by a hundred and fifty-one thousand, that would be nice if we start to see that kind of put back into the budget as well at the state level. And then we're going to have to get creative, because we are looking at a half a million dollar deficit as we move to what we need to do to start either bringing in additional revenue pieces that we believe are available as one-time offsets, or as things that we're going to start to do to get this budget to balance. So this will be fun as we move forward. I know last year, after kind of all was said and done, we ended up, I think we were a couple hundred thousand dollars, it might have been three hundred thousand dollars shy, and we just had to go through the budgets and cut, you know, in a number of different places. We have some availability to be slightly creative with some things. Certainly, you know, new growth and looking at maybe the composition of our free cash year to year to see if there's something in there that we want to maybe adjust as well, that might be an option. So, that being said, that's kind of where we stand right now with the budget summary. So, until.
You talked about the school, I mean, the budgets are somewhat under our control, and the school was looking, I thought, for some direction as to what kind of a cut you were going to ask them to do.
Right.
And I guess I wasn't clear on watching the meetings, what you expect them to cut, because we haven't finished our budget, we haven't done our cuts.
Yep.
So are you, are you and George, who are representatives on that, going to talk about that at the next meeting? They had some budget meetings. They had a budget meeting.
Yeah, the only budget meeting that they had, unfortunately, what that did was that they decided to add two teachers back into the budget under the direction to the administration that they not increase the budget at all. So all that did was pretty much, you know, cut out some ability to reduce the budget, because they had, the administration had come up with a budget at Gray's, where Gray's is a two-teacher school per grade, where they had two teachers retiring, and they were going to end up not replacing those teachers, so that they could add in an additional library specialist that they'd been requesting for a number of years, which they did not do. So they reduced the teachers to kind of offset some of those other increases and the contractual increases. Well, that being said, what ended up happening is that then the school committee met and directed the administration to add those two teachers back in. So somewhere along the line, they will end up manipulating and cutting, I'm sure, another a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the budget in other areas that maybe would have been available to have been cut to reduce the assessment, and instead they're going to be adding in those teachers. So certainly, we're looking at a need to have that assessment reduced, because we're going to be starting out with a half a million dollar budget deficit in the town level. So I think in terms of, I'm still hopeful about the state, at least with the House numbers coming out, to give us a little direction on where this might go, because although I still would want the budget to be reduced as well. I don't know what that number's going to be, so I did want to have these meetings to see exactly where we're starting from, and we can talk a little bit about what we think our revenue sources might be coming forward to offset, to kind of come down with the budget, but ultimately, it is the largest increase in our entire town, is the request from the schools for seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, some increase to us, when that pretty much is all of the new revenue that the town has brought in this year. So that's where we're starting from, so I'd like to see that number come down a couple hundred thousand.
Right, right, I think we need to try to, not that you haven't given them that direction, we haven't given them a number.
We haven't given them a number, yeah.
If you want to give them a number, whatever it is, one, four, two hundred.
Do you have an idea of what, I mean?
To do that, because it isn't to pick on the schools, because we have lots of increases on our own side.
Exactly.
But if the schools, which isn't just our regional schools, we have Old Collin', so if the schools are eight hundred and ninety thousand increase, and we only take in five sixty-six plus two fifty.
Right.
We have to at some point in time, say, to ourselves, we're in an override position, whether it's this year, next year, or the year after, you have to do an override, because we can all add up the same numbers. And the problem, problem is that, it's not a problem, you have to ask for an override minimumly.
I mean, John, you keep asking, you keep saying that, and I know you've said this probably maybe three or four times, where you've brought up the concept of the override, and I think, you know, I'd like to have that conversation, because we have two minutes before Scott's going to present everything to us. But secondly, is really because we haven't yet analyzed our free cash. I know we do, but we don't in terms of what's recurring, so I don't want to negate that. Now, that's playing a little bit with fire, because I hate to bump up estimated receipts, things that typically happen, or are one-time revenue sources coming in to offset regular recurring expenses on the budget. But that being said, and again, I know we're not counting marijuana money until it's here, and I certainly don't want to do that. I'd like to try to see how we can squeeze down that deficit as much as possible through what makes sense, but I also wouldn't be opposed to, I don't want to say, you know, letting it ride with a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand that comes in from one-time source, which is really free cash estimates, to get us through to next year, but then to propose that, look, we know that our contractual obligations coming from the schools are more than what the town even brings in in revenue every year, because of what the schools negotiate with their budget.
It's been like over years.
So we've been trying to find ways to bring in new revenue, the kind of stuff.
I'm not proposing an override for this year, but at some point in time, because alls we're going to do is increase the revenue side, to quite honestly, to balance.
Well, we'll cut some in the expenses too, because I, you know, when we look at what's been spent so far this year versus what's been requested, we always end up, I mean, last year it was almost five hundred thousand dollars of unspent budget requests. So that, I want to make sure we don't have built in here that again, that we really are going through and saying, look, if they haven't spent it by now, we need to talk to the department heads and say, are you going to spend it? Because we're not putting it back in the budget, because that's what they base last year's budget on again, so it just perpetuates that cycle. But that's, that's a component. That might be a couple hundred thousand that we could get rid of easily in this deficit by doing that.
So I'm not, I'm not indicating a.
We did, we cut out a couple hundred thousand last year.
We did last year. I'm not indicating an override for this year.
Yeah, you're just taking the picture.
At some point in time, we have to have that conversation, because it isn't just the schools, it's, the whole budget is rising much greater than our income, because as you've said many times, if we, if you can't, well, I'll say it this time, if you can't balance the budget in an economy that we have today, there's a spend problem, not a cut problem, a spend problem, and.
Oh, yeah.
But there's always that perception of cutting, though, where we're not cutting anything. If you have a proposed budget and people are proposing new things.
Right, that's a good point.
And you don't fund them, you're just not funding them. The schools will say, oh, you're cutting our budget. No, we're just not funding your request.
Right, I always say that incorrectly, and they always take it and twist it, so thank you for pointing that out.
Before we decimate our budgets, if you will, the town budget, they're all our budgets, is to give the schools a specific number that you and George feel comfortable with.
Right.
Because otherwise, it would be the cat and mouse game of how much do I need to cut by? And they have asked us that.
Right.
And we didn't give them that number.
Right, and, you know, in the past, what we've been able to do, and what will happen next year too, is that we have been able to reduce our operating expenses with regard to the debt. And so what we've done is we've managed to cut out a couple hundred thousand dollars of debt payments that previously the town had been utilizing for long-term capital projects. At this point now, when we get into next year's budget, we know that we have a hundred thousand dollars that's falling off the debt schedule as well. So that's another piece that we kind of look at that, and that's how we were able to balance the budget for the past two years, when we looked at the bigger picture, because of what the schools have been taking from the town every year. And it's not to pit the schools against the town, but the bottom line is, it's the biggest percentage of our budget, and we have this issue every year, because the contractual obligations exceed our revenue.
Right, I'm only saying this amongst the public. I mean, our increases, you know, we take in, had the magic number on this page, three point six percent, and we're spending five and a half percent, so at some point in time, and it's not this year.
Yeah.
It's not this year, but it's coming, we don't want to, you get a double whammy by using the one-time funds, and we'll use them.
Right.
To balance.
No, and I always said that to them, every single time we met with the schools for the past couple of years, I said, well, if you want this much money, just propose an override, just propose an override. It just smooths out everything, because if it's designated essentially for the school, then the town has the ability to kind of move forward and not have to cut the other services.
Right, so when we do the capital, when we do the roads, you know, we have in front of us a potential five million dollar.
They want to put it in our lap and make us fight for an override, it's always how it works.
Right, and it's really a funding issue primarily with this.
It's a funding issue that if you want to spend five point four, five percent increase for schools, and we sign up for that, then it just needs the voters to get behind that.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly.
Right. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to decimate town services.
Right.
Because now it is, you begin to pit the town against the schools, and you don't want to do that. Let the taxpayers decide.
Right. Yeah, no, I think that we have some new revenue sources, and we have to see where they come to fruition, but I agree that those are the conversations that we should be having in the fall to prepare everybody for that. So that being said, Scott, welcome. Happy tax season.
Glad you think so.
Come on up to the microphone or else Lake Campbell will get mad at us and give us a little overview as to what you want to do.
Just trying to maintain at this point. We're trying to develop some continuity with the new management company and where our costs are as relative to our income. As far as the parks itself, the costs are pretty much in line with the past few years. They really haven't changed a whole lot, with the exception of possibly some small increases in wages. I don't know, do you have any questions for me?
So how are we doing with regard to this, these are the revenue sources, right? Page, okay, revenue-budget estimate. So with Ted Williams right now. So we're, okay, so you're about, you're pretty much right on target for the hall rental and the bar rental's a little under, right?
Yeah, and I've been trying to investigate those discrepancies. Unfortunately, I haven't had a whole lot of extra time to put into it.
I don't know why.
I don't know why. But it is on the radar and I'm trying to track it. And as we all know, I mean, some difficulty in the past year getting reports with the problems we've had with, not the problems, but the issues with the system. So, I mean, I had a six-month numbers and then I just got, the last one I got was 10 months.
You mean from Todd?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, if we can make sure we get you.
Yeah.
Updating your information, I don't know, is it?
He sends them, Todd sends each department.
Yeah.
Monthly updates.
So maybe I'm not getting it from.
Maybe it's an email issue.
Oh, you haven't gotten them?
I just got the 10-month numbers.
Okay.
But the one before that was six months. I didn't have.
All right. You didn't get Januaries?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
So I was basing a lot of this off of actual for six months. I didn't really have time to update it to the 10 months. It really didn't change a lot as far as the revenue side because those months were December, January, February, which are very slow.
Anyways.
Over across here. We could probably turn the lights out and no one would know.
Yeah.
With the exception of a few things. So that didn't change a lot. Then it's been, I mean, it's winter time, there's not a lot going on.
So you're really just looking at a break even is what this is looking at in terms of expenses, right, versus the revenues coming in?
Yeah.
And then the $35,000 is for the capital.
Straight out of retained earnings.
So.
Yep.
And that's just going to be used for capital.
And that's kind of how I'm trying to do it. I haven't taken over last year doing this. That's kind of how I look at it, matching my revenues with my expenses and if we have anything left over, then we can put it towards capital, so.
Yeah, because right now for.
Right, we've got a lot.
Yeah, you've got.
We've got the fields, the fields are going on, so that's.
And that's what the encumbrances are?
No, the encumbrances are for the drainage on the karate studio parking lot.
Okay.
That's the encumbrance, that's the bulk of what's left over, the $45,000. The capital improvements are for the, mainly for the new fields over on 18.
Okay.
Which we're trying to step into high gear here as the grounds soften up, not too much, but as they soften up.
I think one of the other items on Mitzi too is the park wants to hire, no longer use the highway department employee and just hire a part-time.
Yeah, from a fiscal standpoint.
They're paying $40,000.
Not working out.
With all the allocation from, that's coming over?
Yeah, I mean, we're getting, it's costing us $40,000 for a part-time employee.
So that's not in here, right?
Physically, it's.
Yes, it is.
From a strictly numbers standpoint.
I think it's better for you guys because you have more flexibility and control over that employee, and it's seasonal, and I think it helps the town by freeing up an employee for other stuff.
Right.
A good way to do it, and it's cheaper.
And that's just that we only need him for a certain period. And he's not working here during the wintertime, he goes back to his farm, but it's just physically responsible. We need two people for less than what we're paying them.
And it would be.
Because of the add-ons, you know, the health insurance and.
And it would be when Mike retires.
And that's what this budget is representative of. If you do notice, if you go to the expenses up in the top half, third, second number down is a decrease of about $7,500, which is approximately represents the 16 weeks that Mike's supposed to retire next March, so it would still be April, May, and June. So that's when we're going to, we're going to bring on one person this year to work with him, and then bring on a second person next year, hopefully.
Yep.
To replace his hours and.
So who would that person report to? That's, my biggest question is always what happens in that case because you guys are an elected board, so of part-time volunteers, so who's?
It's a difficult thing, and we're trying to designate, you know, within the board, certain people doing certain things, you know, like one person's in charge of Clear Pond and one person's in charge of Ted Williams.
So one person's in charge then, because you had a Clear Pond director last year.
Right, this was a big, this was a, because the prior years, the director was a glorified lifeguard two years removed.
Yeah. Because I'm just thinking in terms of the number of people that you have to manage when you're in full swing ends up being somewhere around, what, 30?
No.
With all the lifeguards, with all the part-time?
Well, we have four here, but then when you're talking to lifeguards, now we've got a full-time director.
Right, so under that, but who's, the director then reports up to the board?
He comes to a meeting once a month.
Okay.
And then we have one board member that he could call, you know, on a direct basis that he would, could talk to, you know, if he needs something, and then they can come back to the board. We're trying, instead of, you know, having to bring it all the way to a board, as long as it's a small item, you know, or an emergency item.
Right.
As long as someone from the board knows what's happening, you know, that's kind of how we're trying to structure that.
So how are you going to do that when you have two openings too? Like, I'm just concerned about, like, you guys don't have people who are even running for a position, so, you know, at some point maybe we should, you know, I don't know if you want to have a conversation about that, you know, down the road, but, you know, I'm a little nervous as to what's going to happen with you guys, honestly.
Me too.
Because it's a lot of work for elected members.
Well, yeah, it's fallen on three of us.
Right.
For the most part, for the most of the last year anyhow.
Right. And that's the thing is, you know, I don't know if you want to, we talked at one point about would that be something where you'd want to work with, like Franklin, or have somebody that was there to kind of work, but that's, I'm not trying to impose anything, but to have that conversation, it might be a good time when you guys are, I mean, I wouldn't want your job, honestly, because we have Rita and we have Lorraine and we have Tracy and we have, you know, people that work to execute what the board determines they want done, and I can't imagine doing all that work. Same thing with the assessors until they got RRG, you know, it just seems like it's a burden.
It has its moments.
That's very polite.
Just saying, if you want to have that conversation, I would, you know, be happy to have it.
We're hoping that if you people do step up for the next election, I've heard some grumblings of possibly some people wanting to get involved.
Okay, yeah.
So I truly hope so.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's going to be a discussion.
Right, yeah, and just let, you know, just to know, I mean.
Yeah.
I think our board would be more than open to having that discussion, so whatever you guys need to kind of get yourself through, I mean, you have a decent-sized budget and.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Scott, on the expense side, you seem to be pretty consistent. You know, nothing's really changed too much on the expense side. At least I didn't see anything.
No.
On the revenue side, is the hall rental consistent with what you expected? You know, because you did have, you know, last July, August, September, where you do have weddings and stuff, was that consistent with the previous July, August, and September? Because I'm looking, do you believe the retained earnings are going to repeat themselves and continue to grow? That's where you're getting your money to fund your capital improvements. So the expenses look like they're the same as, pretty much.
Right.
The revenue side, I can't tell if the hall rentals, which is the main part of our revenue from that side.
The three-headed, the hall rental, the bar rental, and the catering.
Right, right. So is that as strong as it was the previous year?
I thought it was down, and that's, before I got full swing into tax season, I was trying to figure out why it was down.
Down significantly or down like $10,000?
No, yeah, like 8 or 9%. So it was about, it was strange because when I first looked at it, the bar rental, at the time I looked at it, I think it was four months when I first looked at it, the bar rental was up, the catering was about the same, and the hall rental was down. And I'm going, I just don't understand this.
Right.
You know, so I sat down with Nellie, we called Nikki from SEM, you know, I'm trying to get a handle as to why, you know, and that was in the early stage, that was in the first four months, so there wasn't a whole lot there. And part of it is the way they were doing it, they were receiving the deposits and holding the deposits until the job was finished.
Right, right.
And then turning it over, and that's how we had talked about it, but it wasn't hitting. And I'm like, well, how much is that? It was like $7,000. I'm like, well, that brings it more in line, you know, because that's money that we would have gotten. We would have gotten the deposit, it would have gone, it would have been deposited, and it would have been part of the hall rental.
It's only apples and apples if they, how they did it the year before, that's all.
Right, and well, but as the prior year, that money came into our account.
Okay, okay.
So it's going to take 12 months for that to cycle.
Right, right.
Yeah, but you'll know how many events you have versus how many.
And that's what I'm looking at, and this spring is, they're going to, you know, starting soon, it's going to be two events a weekend, and we had a couple things on Friday and Thursday.
Really, the money is from that hall, they're tendering food, so it's impossible to figure it out unless you just compare July, August, September to the previous July, August, and September. That's it.
Right, and what I was looking at was, because I didn't have that information readily at my hands, so what I was looking at was, I was looking at the total and going, okay, four months, I should have this much, but it's really not that way because it's cyclical. You know, it's the fall is busy and the springtime is really busy, and the summer moves along and the wintertime is dead. So it's, and that, this is, November was the first full year of having the management company.
Right, right.
So that's another dynamic in the whole thing that I'm trying to see, is it worth it?
Right.
I mean, it's worth it because I don't have to run down here and take out the vacuum, that's for sure.
You don't have to deal with the brats, right?
I don't have to deal with it. That's not going to happen.
And you have an attached letter about the drainage issues and hopefully the one by the soccer field, not the karate studio, but the soccer field hopefully will be resolved in the next few weeks.
Right, and the reason I said that was because, you know, when April hits.
Right.
If you all have been down here, you know what happens. It's, and the karate studio parking lot's just as important because that's where half of the baseball parks, but that's a different.
Right, but there is funds to do the karate studio from the driveway money.
The driveway money.
And then they've retained the earnings.
But we encumbered the funds to do the drainage. That's what our encumbrance, that's what the balance of the encumbrance is, that we're paying out of retained earnings for the drainage.
For the karate studio, John, not for the parking lot.
Just for the karate studio.
Right, but the excess money from the road.
Correct.
That we had left over.
We paid that.
It's encumbered under the highway in the article. We still have that one.
That money's not on our budget. You don't see the tar money.
Okay, okay.
You don't see that.
So if we wanted to pave that karate studio, not the drainage issue.
After the drainage is fixed.
It would come out of that.
Warren article for $175,000.
Right, okay.
And the good news, if I can, Mitzi, Jamie Bissonette got Tracy the specs, and Ramco is going to, I think, vote on the karate studio too. I guess Mike Nolan knows the gentleman, but the person that was going to do the drainage in the parking lot backed out, so now we have.
For the soccer field?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're trying to make sure we get that squared away because we all know that soccer season is.
Right, and I mean, as we all know, I mean, it's almost impossible to park there right now.
Yeah, exactly.
To double the efforts, it's just going to be.
Right, yeah, it'll be a secondary nightmare over there and then next to the volleyball games.
Whereas the karate one we can still use.
Right.
Even though it hasn't been finished.
Right, it's also in terrible shape, but at least people drive slow.
It is, and that's why, I mean, for two years I've been, since I got this hat put on it, that's been my, once I found out that the lady got hurt, I didn't even know she got hurt there in the parking lot. So I've been like, we've got to get this done.
Right, trying to get it done.
We've got to get this done before someone else gets hurt.
Another day.
Yeah.
Hopefully no rain.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But those were the only real changes were the decreases in, they were decreases in those areas, but then we increased the line number one to reflect some possible new hires. Other than that, there were no real changes. The only thing is the lodge is, you can see here, it's brought out. I tried to do that last year when we did the budget, but it got lumped in with the other contracted services, so we're trying to specifically identify that a little bit better.
Okay, yeah, I saw that decrease.
So that I can have better tracking of it.
Yeah.
Because that's where, it was getting lumped in there, and I'm like, all right, so what are these contracted services? Where are they going? Some are going to the park, some are going to Clear Pond, some are here.
Right, yeah, what exactly are they?
I'm trying to see where, you know, how much are we making on the building?
Yeah, no, perfect.
Right. And I thought Clear Pond was well-run last year.
Yep, yep, it was a step in the right direction.
Yep.
Definitely. You know, we, I, in hopes that we did get Doug hired last year, I tried to bump up some little, you know, expenditures, added another $750 to, for, you know, activities fees, and I bumped that up again this year in hopes that we could get some more things down there, music in the park, things like that that bring people in and are great things for the town, you know. But other than that, no real, no real major changes on this budget.
Cool. Anyone have any questions?
No.
No? All right. We don't even really vote on it anyway, so hey, thank you.
No problem.
Awesome.
Thank you for allowing me to come in this time.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, exactly, right? I know, I'm like sorry as I'm like answering, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm amazed.
I never feel bad doing that in front of another CPA, it's great.
No, but last week is done.
Yeah, I know, that was, that was good.
Well, for us, that's the second deadline. We have a lot of farmers, so I'm not sure. Crazy one too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I just got a quick thing.
Yep.
And everybody's wondering why page 11 was in your book. John Powley picked up on the Howland Road, sale of Howland Road. We had sold for $635,000. The town accountant had subtracted the 230, 160 twice. So on your first sheet, it only showed around $200,000. We still have $400,000.
I was reluctant to tell you that.
Oh, he told me.
As you'll spend it, no, I was reluctant to tell.
And then.
Spend it this year.
For the board.
John, why don't we just transfer all of that to solve our budget deficit? I think that sounds like a fantastic idea.
This year could be so hot.
And then just a quick thing for the board of selectmen, if they could vote to authorize you to sign the grant, Green Communities Grant application?
Sure. So I would be happy to entertain a motion to allow me to sign the Green Communities Grant application.
For 2019.
Either of you, so.
Scott, come to.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
We'll type everything in.
Okay.
We didn't have time.
So do you want me to just sign here?
Chief of luck.
Right there, yeah. That being said, we, any other business, old business, new business, other business? Motion to adjourn. Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and John would have said too.